Okay, we move on to number three, proclamation poppy days. Poppy days. They're here again. I'll bet you that's Carm Staker. How about Karma? Karma. Both of you, well that's really great. Karma by the way is retired mayor as well. You got a package deal, wonderful. And two granddaughters. Well that's just super. Do you have a proclamation June?
Yes I do. Poppy days, May 20th and 21st, 2016. Whereas America is a land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers and whereas millions who have answered the call have died in the field of battle and whereas a nation must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of this memorial flower whereas I Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim May 20th and 21st, 2016 as poppy days and request all citizens to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on these days.
Thank you June. I think Karma has signed a few of those in her life. Vice Mayor, any comments? You're the retired military.
I just want to thank these ladies for being here. You've come here every year and we do appreciate it and we thank you for coming to our town to do this for us, so thank you again very much.
Any other councilor? Marty?
Yeah, as part of the poppy days I will be participating as a member of the American Legion. If anybody wants to come down and get their poppy from me, I'll be in front of Ace Hardware on Friday from 1:00 to 3:30. So come on down, see me, get your poppy and hopefully you make a donation. Thank you.
Thank you Marty. Any others?
I just always appreciate everything that you do. Thank you so much.
Karma, your comments?
Well, I'm going to be at the Safeway on Saturday afternoon, so if you would like to come and get a poppy from me, I would be very pleased. I just really appreciate Mayor Skug the opportunity for us to be here and talk about our veterans and the need that we have and what we do with the monies that we receive from the poppies so that we can serve the veterans in our community. I'll just mention a couple of things. We gave a scholarship this year and we do this every year. And we have Girl State and that's where young women in the community go and learn about the government. And we give donations to the Creative Arts Festival which is out at the VA. We have a Christmas gift shop at the VA where we have gifts for the veterans and their families. And I could go on and on, I'm sure you've... Our mayor has kind of given me a timeline here.
Appreciate you.
Thank you and thank you folks and thank you for your support and most of all, thank you for the veterans who have given so much to make our country what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Karma.
In Flanders, Jordan, Jordan Birch, in Flanders Fields, the poppies below, between the crosses row and row that mark our place and in the sky, the lark still bravely singing, flies scarce heard amid the guns.
Hi, I'm Jada Birch and thank you.
Oh, thank you. Sally, you're next.
Mayor Skug, it's always a pleasure to get to come out here and we do appreciate the town of Prescott Valley supporting our poppy days and advertising for us, so thank you so much for having us. And these poppy girls are growing up, I don't know, they'll be taking over from me soon. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. They're on their mission, so that's just great. Anything else you want to add? Anything else Vice Mayor? Thank you so much and we do appreciate what the veterans have done. Believe it or not, my dad was World War I, so I kind of have a feeling for it myself. It is special. Any other comments?
I don't believe so. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much and Sally says don't give her the mic again. That was... What a lady. We do too. Next is a discussion regarding the proposed $10,000 contribution to Matforce. Larry?
Yes Mayor and Council, the item they have before you and the reason it's here in work study is that we received a letter from Matforce going ahead and requesting a $10,000 contribution to Matforce and that request has been forwarded to City of Prescott, Cottonwood, Sedona and the communities that have been involved in Matforce. And it appears that there may be some question about renewal of some grant funding and they are aggressively going after additional grant funding. And we have representatives of Matforce that would certainly like to get up and explain the rationale for that. And so although as you know, the budget is already set and adopted, if you elect to go forward with a $10,000 contribution to Matforce in the new fiscal year, we would end up needing to go into contingency and then transfer that over to non-departmental if you elect to go down this path. And so with that, please.
How about Kelly? Are you coming up too?
Insist on it Mayor.
You're up Kelly.
Thank you so much Mayor Skug and council members and I just greatly appreciate the opportunity. I know most of you are familiar with Matforce. We just celebrated our 10-year anniversary, that was a really exciting thing, I know that some of you were even there and Laura Lee's not here today, but she's been on one of the 12 committees of Matforce since its very beginning, so we've greatly appreciated her support. The reason that we are asking for some financial assistance is that we did recently receive notice from Health Choice Integrated Care that the state is making some changes in the prevention funding that we've received for the last several years. Without notice, we received a $10,000 cut in our budget for this year. Next year it goes to a 40% cut and then they've told us that after that, that funding will not be available. And it was really hard for us because there was no notice, you know, we apply for other funding sources on a regular basis, but in order for us to continue to do the things that we do, we have, I'll give you a little bit of background, it's very hard to understand Matforce because we do everything from provide information to get bills passed, you know, ask legislators to consider bills and work on passing bills and a lot of things in between. But a couple statistics that I do want you to know just for Prescott Valley, Kelly's here with me today and she's one of our education coordinators, with her working on this side of the mountain and another part-time employee working on the other side of the mountain. And she just gave me the numbers for this calendar year, school year. She was in Coyote Springs, Humboldt Elementary, Prescott Valley Charter School, Glassford Middle School and Bradshaw High School and was in front of 3,328 students giving them research and evidence-based education on, you know, trying to get them to prevent the use of substances, drugs and alcohol. That's just one of the things that we do. Another thing that we do in Prescott Valley that you might not know is we actually contract with Humboldt Unified School District to do parenting education. And this last year through parenting classes and workshops, they provided parenting education to over 230 parents. So it goes from that to the Yavapai reentry project that we started a few years ago where we provide a community coach to people that come out of prison, we match them with this community coach for support. And I can go on forever, which I will stop because to tell you all of the things that Matforce does, it's very comprehensive, but again, our goal is to prevent people from abusing substances. It's right now, it's hard for us to consider taking a funding cut and stopping some of the programs because we're really concerned about the heroin problem in our county. And so I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about our budget or programs or anything that you would like to know.
Kelly, your comments?
I gave Mary Lee those numbers and I hadn't actually added them up yet for the year and I was pleasantly surprised at how many kids we actually reached in Prescott Valley with the drug prevention education that we do. I take it to heart when I go and talk to these kids and I appreciate the schools giving us the time. I'd love to be in all of the schools, time permitting, to give more back to the kids. They deserve it.
Thank you. Council, any comments?
Thanks Steve.
Steve?
I do have a comment. I know that in Arizona, it's illegal for public funds to be used to rally against a ballot initiative. And I'm worried that that would happen or you use this and then the funds that would have been used for this go to support that. And I don't know if we can tell the difference in what's going to happen there. And that kind of worries me because I don't want to be part of breaking the law. So I'm not saying you guys are going to do that, but I don't want to be part of it. And if you waited till November after the election was over, then it might be a different story because there won't be anything to oppose, so that's just my view on it.
I don't think they've campaigned for politicians, they have campaigned for drug-free.
Right.
Larry, you have any comment to that?
Yeah, we have very strict policies that we follow for those, like, so what he's referring to is Matforce has taken a public position against the legalization of marijuana. And so we do have to use unrestricted funds for anything that we do for that particular initiative. But we actually, to be honest, we formed a separate political action committee that is totally separate from Matforce. We have very strict rules that we follow with cost centers and you could even earmark, you know, the funds to say just specifically to go to education in the schools or parenting education. We don't use any federal, state government funds at all to advocate against the legalization of marijuana. We do provide education in the schools, like Kelly has different curriculums that she does with the middle school and high school kids, educating them on the harms, but that's totally different from advocating for people and the way for them to vote on legalization. So I could absolutely 100% guarantee that not one dime would be used for that. We're audited every year and that's the type of thing that they go through very carefully to make sure that we're following all of the rules.
Good. Mary?
I just had a question in what you were saying about the fact that, you know, this year they took away this much money and next year they're going to do this and apparently what I'm understanding is they're just going to not be there for the organization at all. What's the idea for your organization after going forward?
Well, we're working hard on some different avenues and so just to give you a little background information in that, the federal, it's federal funds that were channeled down from the state and then to different coalitions in the state. And we haven't actually had a direct conversation with a governor's office to say why they made this decision, but I can let you know in Maricopa County, there were 10 coalitions that were funded that lost all of their funding, just cold turkey this year. So we were lucky to even keep 40%. It's kind of a change in philosophy that they have with the prevention dollars and at some point, we do want to have a discussion with them. We're actually being audited for one of the grants that we have next week and I'm going to raise that question. I think it's actually very sad, my personal opinion, because with a coalition, the capacity when you have, you know, law enforcement at the table with treatment providers, with the schools, you know, all of the different components of our community working together, you know, the capacity is so much more effective and I'm not sure what their thought is with this change in funding. There was no notice. We met with the CEO of Health Choice Integrated Care and he really didn't, they weren't given any notice either, so it was, it's a great question and I wish I had an answer for.
Well, I think personally for me that I might go into this a lot deeper, just to find out if they're going to take the money from you, then what are they going to do with that money is what I'd like to know. What is their, what is the purpose of taking it from the organization and what do they need it for now?
One thing that I've heard that they're going to do on the state level with some of those funds is to give money directly to the schools for substance abuse education. And what I was told is they're going to select three schools in each county to do a test program with 7th graders, it's a evening program that they're going to do with the children and the parents. The thing that's different for us, because we just were trying to fill a need when we started doing substance abuse education in the schools. And you know, I can give you the number because Kelly probably doesn't even know this, I actually added up for the year and this is all of Yavapai County, we were in front of 12,659 students with 10 different curriculums. And so, you know, we do this all for free for the schools and we have other volunteers that help us, so I'm not sure why the state, I think there's other places that don't have substance abuse education in the schools. We're an exception here because we've tried to fill that need through Matforce and so maybe they're, we're looking at other counties and thought that was a good solution, but we got, it's kind of like the baby got thrown out with the bath water is what happened.
And just, how long has the state been helping your organization? Do you know about how many years?
We have, we've had different sources, the one form of state money that we have is called the Parents Commission Grant, that we're actually ending that June 30th and we've reapplied for that funding, I haven't heard yet if we'll receive it again. That's through tobacco taxes. The money that we know for sure that we're not getting was actually federal money that was federal, it's sapped, it's substance abuse prevention and treatment dollars that go to the state and then the state funnels them out to organizations and that, they're not, there's not a deduction from the federal government in the amount of money that they're getting, it's just they're using it in different ways, not giving it to the coalitions. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the feds are sending it to the state, but the state's deciding to use it in a different manner.
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry to hear that.
Vice Mayor? Marty?
Yeah, now that the legislature is done down in Phoenix and our legislators and officials are back here in Yavapai County, Karen Fan and Noel Campbell, have you made appointments or spoken to them regarding this reduction? Because I know Noel Campbell's bill that just passed regarding group homes has a certain, you know, has an attachment to what you're doing because if your work is successful, we won't have anybody in the group homes because they will have been educated and they don't go that, down that path, or the number of group homes will be greatly reduced. So they should have a certain amount of sympathy for what you're doing and might be able to help you.
Right, and we haven't approached them yet, you know, we, it was because there was such short notice, you know, that's why we actually put a request into different municipalities in the county to, you know, to figure out so that we could keep going and I could keep the staff that I have working and keep our office and all of that sort of thing. So I do think that that's a good point and I think that we do need to have those conversations because another thing I'd like you all to know is we just received our third national award. We have a coalition member that's going to Wisconsin to receive this award from the National Rural Health, let's see, it's the National Rural Health Alcohol and Drug Network. And so, you know, we've received national recognition for the outcomes that we've achieved and so it didn't, it doesn't make sense to cut our funding, so I would like to have that discussion with some other people, yes.
And then the other thing is, if they're going to have a test program, we already have an established program, so why not just reimburse us for what we're already doing?
I so agree with you. I, yes, I so agree with you.
Well, if I speak to our representatives, I will definitely let them know.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mike?
Yeah, I'd just like to recommend, I think it would be interesting to consider earmarking, would it be possible for you to give us some priorities, not necessarily tonight, but before we bring this to a vote next week?
Yes, and just off...
So we would know what's important.
The top of my head, I would love to, for the education in the schools and the parenting education, I think those are two very strong things that we've done specifically for Prescott Valley because that's again, can be earmarked, you know, for Kelly's time to help with those projects. With the parenting education, we've actually had a contract with HUSD and we pay the facilitators so we could continue to do that with this money, so that's actually what I would like to earmark it for if it was approved.
Larry?
I was curious, what reaction have you received from the other cities that you've made the request to?
So Chief Monahan is helping us with the request to Prescott, it is moving through, I haven't heard anything specific. We had to fill out a grant application from Cottonwood and so that's in the process of being reviewed. Sedona has specific things that they will support, which we did not fit into one of those categories, so we actually have a meeting scheduled with their mayor to talk more about our request. And, let's see, who am I forgetting? Prescott.
Clarkdale.
So those, Clarkdale, we didn't actually put the request at Clarkdale and so I didn't hear back from Camp Verde or Chino Valley and we're going to do a follow-up with them, but the other four, it's moving forward, the request.
And this is a one-time request?
Yes.
Because I would feel very uncomfortable if we were opening up a door that 10 years from now we found ourselves still going ahead and doing it. So I see this as a bridge request until you're able to get the grants lined up so that you're sustainable.
Right, totally understandable, yes. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Steve?
I do have one more question. You mentioned that you're getting an award, your third award for progress that you guys have made. Do you have any numbers for?
I do. Thank you for asking. Thank you for asking, I'm going to actually read them. I have a couple of things I'd like to just leave if, I know some of you have already seen this, but this is what we put out at our 10-year celebration, it actually has the 10 years and major accomplishments, but we just did this last year. So we use different indicators, so the Arizona Youth Survey is one of the main indicators that we use and since, from 2006 to 2014, it's a survey that's done every even years with 8th, 10th and 12th grade students. We've had a 35% reduction in underage drinking and a 55% reduction in prescription drug abuse amongst our youth. So those are two of the very substantial things that we can report. I have bad news on the marijuana front, I'm sad to say we've had a 20% increase and that's why we focused really hard on educating our kids on the harms of marijuana. It's very difficult in this environment for them to understand that, so that's the one thing that we're working really hard at, but the three substances that they abuse the most, and I'm not leaving, I'm leaving out tobacco because we don't handle that as much as the health department does. Alcohol is number one, marijuana is number two and prescription drugs is number three. So we've had, you know, good success with two, we need to keep working on marijuana.
Any other questions? Comments? Larry, something else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that we would bring this back to you in the first regular meeting in June. That way it will give everybody a chance to bring additional data and then also talk specifically about where our dollars would be spent, to go ahead and they've heard Council Member Marshall's concerns, very legitimate in an election environment which we're in right now. And so we would ask that you would address those concerns and then if you elect Mr. Mayor and Council, we would bring it back, the first voting session in June.
What do you think? Marty?
I say yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mary?
I, yes.
Mike? Steve? Okay, we're going to bring it back as quick as we can and if there's any more questions, you'll have a chance to answer them, address them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Kelly? Thank you, Mary Lee. Okay, now we move on to number five. Discussion, West Yavapai Guidance Clinic Fee Permit Waiver. Ryan or Larry?
Mr. Mayor and Council, West Yavapai Guidance Clinic is in the process of building a new hospital in the town of Prescott Valley. And this particular hospital is going to go in at East Ridge. The property has been purchased and renovations are beginning. This particular hospital will be a place that will be pre-arrest partially and it will end up giving our police department the opportunity to divert individuals that are emotionally challenged, which right now end up for the most part being run into Prescott or over to Camp Verde and incarcerated. And this is the type of program that West Yavapai Guidance, and I know that Chief Gerald would go ahead and suggest, that we end up dealing with much more frequently than what we would like to deal with. And we have professionals from West Yavapai that are certainly trained to deal with these particular types of individuals that are challenged at that point in time. They have a number of beds in that facility. They also end up, in the design, which I've seen, there is a drop-off point for our police officers, a side door, special door, where they are able to escort somebody into the facility to go ahead and have some of their issues remediated, if you will. It is a facility that we are missing in the central Yavapai County area and the incidences of the need for this kind of mental health facility are on the rise and actually rather steeply increasing in the need. Now, with that in mind, West Yavapai is moving forward, they are going to be creating a number of jobs. And so putting aside the social service and policing benefit, this is a new industry coming to town or a new facility for industry coming to town, they're going to be putting on better than 20 new employees and we oftentimes work to incentivize a new business like this coming to town. And in conversation with Larry Green from West Yavapai, made it clear that we were really not in a position to go ahead and do anything other than take a look at their construction permit costs, meaning the development impact fees, the permit fees, and told him that I would come to you with the suggestion that we would consider rebating those fees for the tenant improvements that are going on right now. Now, saying that, we've got fixture unit counts that are taken into consideration for water and sewer fees and they would have to pay those fees, but as we have done in some other situations, we have agreed to rebate those fees and I would suggest that we would rebate those in an amount no greater than $20,000. I don't think it'll be that much, but this is a facility that certainly is going to help the community. And I don't know if you want our police chief to comment on how useful that would be, but I'm sure that he's got a word or two to say about that.
I'm sure he does. Chief? Are they going to retain the present 16-unit hospital they have?
Say that again?
Are they going to keep the 16-unit hospital they presently have?
Yes, that's not going away.
This will be a...
This is in addition to it and it has a special focus.
Chief, you're up. 20 minutes.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council? Actually, yes, the hospital they have now is going to remain. This is modeled after a facility in Phoenix. And so one of the big things in the world of law enforcement today, and it's actually been pretty well exposed on the national debate stage over the past few months, is the amount of mental health and juveniles that are in our justice system. And so this is a way of diversion for the mental health. So if my officers get called out to a scene and it ends up that the person has a mental illness which is the root, the real root of the problem, in the past we would bring them to the jail. Well, the jail's not going to take them, they're not going to accept them because of the mental health. And we end up sending them to another facility somewhere, our officers are usually tied up for a while while this all goes on. And ultimately, the people are being, going to be charged with a crime and are going to be entered into the adult juvenile, or the adult justice system and there's no diversion and again, the root problem is mental health. So this facility is set up, so if we get somebody who is involved in an incident and it's, we determine that it's more than likely as a result of a mental health issue, we take them to this facility, we drop them off and we're done. We leave. And they do all the treatment there, they do everything that's necessary to evaluate and provide the treatment necessary without entering these people into the justice system. And in the end, I am in 100 total support of that.
Thomas, Mary? Or Steve was first?
No, you go.
Okay.
I'll just say, when I moved here, I was kind of, it was kind of blew my mind that there was no mental health facility here. Every other place I lived in the United States had something, so I fully support this, I think we should do it.
Mary?
I do appreciate that we would have something that would continue to help further the people here when they have problems like this and get some good help instead of a jail, so that's good.
And I personally, I'm hoping that this leads to in the future, some... And I personally, I'm hoping that this leads to, in the future, some kind of juvenile diversion, again, for the same reasons, because we tend to criminalize our juveniles for things like truancy and certain other status crimes and runaways and we don't come to the root of the problem. And what ends up happening is these young people are then introduced eventually into the juvenile justice system. And once that ball starts rolling, it's very, very difficult for them to straighten out their lives and stay out of the adult justice system.
Right.
And so, if we can divert them at a young age, get them the help they need and invest in fixing and curing the problem at an early age, then we save lots of money on the other side of it for incarceration and recidivism and all those other things that come with it. So, hopefully, this is going to be a first step. Mental health is a big issue nowadays and we need to address it.
All right.
Mary, you had a comment?
Certainly dovetailing with what the chief said, the payback to, I mean, just as a very practical matter, the payback in terms of time that will not be needed to be consumed by the police department will pay itself back in one year, guaranteed. But in a much bigger picture, diverting these people from the criminal justice system, getting the assistance they need prior to entering into the system, and it's juveniles and adults. And so, dealing with that here at the local, as our own local facility, will be huge for the area and will pay back very quickly. And so, you know, we're encouraging at the staff level, saying, come on, West Yavapai, go ahead, just really move forward, you're really helping us out. And so-
And again, it's about leadership and Larry Green at West Yavapai Guidance Clinic is top-notch and he's really leading this charge and I support him 100%.
Good. Marty, you had a comment?
Yeah, two, really. Well, the West Yavapai Guidance Clinic, I mean, they do an awesome job and I'm 100% in favor of this program, knowing full well that on the other side, like you said, it's going to save us lots of money in the long run. But getting back to the issue that we're talking about, which is the fee waiver, I just want to reaffirm for the people watching at home that this is not something that is unprecedented. I mean, we've done this before for other organizations and for other businesses. So, it's not like we're showing special favor for someone new and unique. I mean, we've done this before for other businesses.
We have. As an incentive for job creation and service delivery. And in this particular case, 20 new jobs, you've got a facility that's open 24/7, provides a service for a specially targeted area of our community, and it has the net impact of saving this organization dollars. Now, that's putting aside all of the human benefit, but just on a pure dollar and cents basis, this really makes sense. And then, once again, you've got the human side of it that can avoid some tragedies out there.
Other comments? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment too. I think I saw something on the television not long ago in terms of incarceration and I was kind of blown away that at least 50%, I think it's over 50, of the people are incarcerated around the nation have mental health issues. And I think the police departments around the country have been pretty much the treatment arm of mental health and obviously, there's always been a challenge for funding through the federal government, which is obviously drying up as we speak. So, I think it's something that will, I think, positively impact our community and hopefully reduce the impact in terms of crime and help these people become more productive. I did want to mention too that I think both the Matt Forth and West Yavapai are both nonprofits, if I'm not mistaken. So, I think it's something where we should be able to and be willing to step up and help the nonprofits in our community assist us in making our community better. So, I definitely support that.
It's an interesting thing, a research paper I just read recently talked about how a gentleman, and he was actually an attorney and he represented death row inmates. And it wasn't the point of the article to debate the death penalty issue, but he said one thing I think everybody can agree on and that is that the senseless murder that led to the death penalty should never have occurred. And when he looked at and studied the vast majority of death row inmates, most of them had either a mental health issue or had been involved in the juvenile justice system, obviously at an early age. And the amount of money that we spend to incarcerate, public defend, and go through, especially in a death penalty case, is enormous. And if a fraction of that money had been spent at the early intervention stages to correct these deficiencies in mental health issues and other youth problems, we can avoid a lot of this on the end. We can't avoid it all, that's, I mean, nobody's going to argue that, but we can certainly put an end to a great deal of it. So, early intervention and diversion, I'm 100% behind it.
Vice Mayor, you had a comment? Yeah, as Councilman Grossman had indicated, the real bottom line here is the incentivization that we're talking about. And I think to carry that a little bit further, we have to be very careful about the fact that we've done it before so it's not something unique. Because I think each one of these issues has to stand on its own. And I think we've done that with this. We've shown the value that's involved in this, both the human value and the dollar value, the new jobs that are coming into town. I think it can stand on its own merit that this does hold value for this town and for its citizens. And I think it's certainly worthy of our attention and worthy of our citizens' money. So, I'm in favor of bringing this back to us. Any other comments?
Vice Mayor, to your point, the other aspect is that I think in the end, it makes your community safer because it allows us to be able to be free to do other things.
Any other comments? Anybody, shall we ask him to bring this back to us? Everybody agree, agree to that?
Yeah.
Okay, Chief, we'll bring this thing back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, we move on then to number six. Discussion Award of Contracts for Annual Public Works Material and Supply Programs. Norm, it looks like you've done all right on this this year.
Yeah, we've done very well, Mayor. I'd like to give you a little background for the public's benefit too and even council's benefits. So, do come this year, about every, this time every year to talk about our annually bid contracts. This is where we actually use outsourcing, is the buzz term, and the private sector to assist us in commodities market in addition to labor. The experts that do some street maintenance that have the equipment that we can't keep busy full-time and keep efficient. So, we look for the private sector to assist us with the particular materials and also labor. If I could take just a few minutes, these are annually bid material contracts and what you see above you is, I'm going to talk about in the next item too, some of the service contracts, but this one currently, the item you have before you, is for the annually bid material contracts. One thing that is, I guess, a little surprising in commodities market, asphalt and petroleum has gone down. We're actually saving money over what we've done over the past year. So, we're, I guess, suspect to that. Good news is, it's gone down. So, we're actually saving money on asphalctic products and we're seeing anywhere from 10 or 15% reduction in the same business we were doing last year. So, that's great news from there for better, you know, money saved there. The other thing too, we've got great local competition. These contracts, we work very hard, we know the vendors out there, have longstanding relationships, staff members, operations manager, Alex Romero, he maintains these relationships and actually goes and beats the bushes pretty hard to let every local contractor know there's good work out here and good money to be made. And just because you don't see typically someone turning in, we go out and we, each one of these contracts has up to a dozen particular vendors looking at them. And a lot of the particular, bigger, let's call it the valley area, they don't look at it because they know our local competition is very, very stiff and there's no reason for them to spend time with it. And we do look and benchmark against last year's numbers to make sure that everything has been reasonable. So, with that, we've had some great local competition. I would like to touch upon some of the individual items. The biggest one, I think roadway materials, as you see, this is where we buy our asphalt to patch streets and concrete products and the like. As I mentioned, we had a local competition from two very qualified vendors serve, give us a very quality product. So, depending on the particular material, this particular contract, we can award, depending on the lowest bid price according to the commodity and the material being bought. So, we will award with your recommendation next week, contracts to both asphalt pavement supply and Vulcan, depending on individual commodities you see listed there. The next time, I really wanted to touch upon this asphalt paving is the one that we basically, with the half-cent sales tax put into place, this is the one that we tuned up a little bit and we added some different labor items so that when council's direction was some of the core of the town, we want some of the edges restored that have broken off due to fatigue and long, and wear on the pavements, this is the one that we're going to work with the local contract community and basically double our staff. We talked about the half-cent sales tax, we said we're not going to increase any street staff. This is how we do that and increase spending up to $500,000 to $1 million a year of just additional street maintenance in addition to the chip seal. So, I really wanted to point out, you can see our two contractors I bring to you very regularly that do very good public works construction, that being Earth Resources Corporation Asphalt Pavement Supply. They're both Prescott Valley contractors, they employ local people, very, very good at what they do. And as you can see there, you've got to look real close on the aggregate of a $350,000 contract, there are $1,500 worth of difference. You've got to look real hard. Can't get competition any more strict than that. What we're looking forward to is this project, we anticipate there being a neighborhood of $200,000 to $350,000 worth of labor effort and materials for them to help patch the roads on some of next year's chip seal projects. So, different, some similarities in this asphalt paving labor contract, so to speak, but just wanted to point out at the council, that's how we keep up with an extra infusion of $2 million a year. This is where it's coming from, using the private contract community to do that with their equipment. Could touch upon, you know, concrete, asphalt pavement supply has had this for a lot of years. We touched, reached out to a dozen contractors and asphalt pavement supply came in right where they were last year. So, it's our recommendation award that's a very good price and very competitive. Likewise, Culvert, actually Culvert has switched this year. We typically have a couple vendors. One vendor chose not to bid, but in addition, right in line with the particular bids we saw last year. And likewise, Solid Waste Disposal is one of those that last year, Best Pick, had the contract, very similar labor. They know how to cut a tight margin, but waste management came in cheaper this year. So, there's your competition likewise with some of the portable toilets, very strict competition here locally and they do a very good job for us. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, Mayor, about this particular-
Questions, anyone?
I don't have any questions.
Clear. I think it's pretty clear, Norm, and Vice Mayor says it's clear.
Very good, Mayor. We'd like to bring it back next week for your approval of contracts. That way, we hit the ground running July 1st.
Yeah, I think you can bring this back to us.
Next Thursday.
Right. Okay, thank you. Well, then we move on to number seven. Discussion, change orders for renewal of annual contracts, land, fuel, or rather, fuel, landscape, street striping, street sweeping and janitorial services. There again, it looked like you really did a good job on that.
Yeah, Mayor, these are actually the service contracts that we've had longstanding relationships, geez, up to 10 years or more with some of these vendors. It is bid, rebid every five years, but we do annually look at the particular vendor and see what the particular market's like. The service they provided this last year. I'm very happy to report that each particular vendor listed here has given us a 0%, no increase and said we'd like to do it again with you. And do like to point out that, yes, these are rebid every five years, they have the option for renewal. Every one of these particular vendors has said, I'd like to just do the business, you're a great customer of ours and you pay well and we have got a wonderful relationship. So, once again, Mayor, this is what really augments the particular staff that we'd have to have in place to provide great service on our streets and service that we provide to residents. I did want to make the comment, if council may recall that the last particular item there, we see service contract rebid. Council probably recalls that last year, similarly, we would bring the sweep, the mowing contract to you and our vendor said, I need more money. And we said, you're working outside the contract, we can't renew it. We decided to rebid it. Council may recall, we only got one bid back. We even worked harder to try to get, it's kind of a unique mowing situation that not a lot of landscapers, but we sent it out to probably 25 landscapers. And there's a prime example of, we awarded that here about a month ago to take place this July 1st, but there's a good example of a renewal that we didn't come to terms with and we rebid it and found somebody else. And once again, council may recall, we had three competitive bids for that and so very good competition. So, happy to report for the residents of Prescott Valley that very good competition in place and these particular vendors do a very good job for us and that's about all we can ask for out of them. Any questions, Mayor?
Any other questions? Anybody?
I just, you know, I just want to say that we do outsource a tremendous amount, you know, of our jobs here and we are a very good functioning government and the opportunity of the relationships that also the town builds with the private businesses out there is a good thing also. So, all of this works well for all of us. So, I appreciate the hard work you do.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Mallory. It's important to note too that aggregately, these items, in both these items is about half a million dollars, depending on the particular service, but this item and the last item add up to about, aggregately, about a million dollars worth of business, so to speak, in effort there. So, yes, very large contracts that we employ with these people.
Pretty interesting, every one of them kept their costs at the current levels.
No increase.
Comment?
I was just going to say, no increase in any of them.
Marty, you got a comment?
Yeah, I just want to let Norm know how, you know, what a great job him and his staff do to get these contracts in place. Not only do they get them in place, but they get them in place so we could start the fiscal year July 1st and start with this so we don't have to put the bids out on July 1st and wait till August or September before we get bids back and we can't start the contracts until the weather isn't, you know, viable for them to work. So, again, you know, to you and your staff, great job. Thank you for what you do.
I think, I can further add that every one of these are companies that we've worked with before and have done a good job.
And once again, local contractors, they employ local people and keeps the local economy running with this particular effort by each one of these contracts.
Any other comments, anyone? Everyone agreeable to having Norm bring this back next time?
Yes.
Yes.
Be my pleasure, Mayor. We'll bring it back next Thursday.
Good job, Norm.
Thank you.
And thank Alex for us too. Okay, we have one more item that everybody hates and that's adjournment. Meeting is adjourned.